Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Chambers. This is the meeting of the Legislative Investigations Committee. Before we start, please turn off all cell phones. And if you intend to testify, there should be a sign up sheet somewhere outside. If you, yep, so please sign in, and if you sign in and want to testify, make sure you check the testify box. This is a Legislative Investigations hearing on the commercial water bill situation, Legislative Oversight Matter 20-0079, for the purpose of investigating the depth and scope of the city's underbilling of commercial water customers. In attendance, we have been joined by Council President Brandon Scott, Council Member McCray, Vice Chair of the Committee, Council Member Slifer, a member of the committee, Council Member Sneed, a member of the committee. We've also been joined by Council Member Bullock, from the Ninth District, and Council Member Henry of the Fourth District, signing up to speak. All right. Representing the Council President's office, we are joined by Dominic McIlly?
MacInley.
Maybe? McIlly? I always destroy his last name, my apologies. From the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themless, Cheryl Goldstein, and Lester Davis, and representatives from DPW Finance and Department of Law. With that, I'm going to hand it over to the sponsor of the resolution, Council President Scott.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everybody, for being here about this critically important issue. When we called for this hearing in January, The Sun had reported that in addition to the Ritz Carlton, forty businesses self-reported that they hadn't received water bills. But here we are, over one month later, and nearly eight hundred council addresses are still pending investigation. This issue of water billing has been an issue for Baltimore for far too long. And in a city where we have the issues that we have with gun violence and overdose and trying to fight for our schools to have properly, schools that are properly funded, if our government can't get the basic, simple stuff right, how can we expect the citizens to believe that we will tackle that? And when you talk about the experiences of our residents, like Kimberly Armstrong, who provided passionate testimony at the deliberations at the Water Accountability and Equity Act hearing, who is still fighting, years later, to have a expensive erroneous water bill addressed to no avail, we all know that this is unacceptable. We, this is not transparency, this is not leadership, this is not accountability, and we here at the council are doing our part by having this oversight hearing, but also with legislation like the Water Accountability and Equity Act that will take effect in April. Now, we are demanding that the administration take responsibility for this issue and get it resolved once and for all. We've sent a letter to the mayor outlining the type of questions that we will be asking tonight about this very important issue, and I look forward to hearing about solution-oriented action that will be taken to put this issue to bed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, as mentioned previously, questions were sent. My understanding is that Ms. Goldstein will be delivering some sort of response to those questions, along with the agency heads in the hearing joining you today. Thank you.
Sorry, I have reading glasses, so I have to, you know, kind of go up and down. So, good evening, Council President, Chair of the Committee, and other council folks who are here today. I'm going to be talking predominantly about the water bill audit that's taking place. As you all know, in mid-October, the Mayor's Office learned of potential underbilling of the Ritz Carlton residents. And at that time, when we learned of that, we immediately directed the Department of Public Works to investigate that issue. That investigation uncovered that the Ritz Carlton residents had, were not being billed for water consumption. So while the Ritz had received a water bill for certain water charges, when their water meter was installed in 2007, which of course predates many of us in any of our roles, that meter, for whatever reason, and we, you know, we don't, we don't know, and we probably won't know, that that account was not actually properly created in the water billing system. And back then, we had people who did manual meter reads, and so that wasn't put on somebody's account, who was going to walk foot or drive around and read meters. So that meter was never read from the time that it was installed. When the new system came online in 2016, because there wasn't an active account that had been read, it didn't transfer into the new system. So when we discovered this, there was actually, the meter was in the ground, it had been running all this time, there was a read taken off of that meter, and as you know, there have been discussions about, you know, working with the Ritz Carlton about that back billing. Once we figured that all out, Mayor Young called for a water bill audit on October 23rd, and the purpose of that audit was to ascertain whether there were other Baltimore city customers that were not receiving bills for water usage or consumption. Now, to provide a context to this issue, there are just over 215,000 Baltimore city customer water billing accounts. In order to identify accounts and locations that needed to be investigated as part of the audit, we used a number of data sets to identify properties and accounts that might not be receiving proper water bills. We used the current UMAX billing records, we used the real property database, we looked at developers' agreements, HCD's vacant properties database, the demolition database, and DPW's current water meter database. Based on the analysis of all of those records, we identified approximately eight hundred locations and accounts that may not have been billed properly for water consumption. Just to, again, I don't want to, I'm not trying to minimize the problem, but just to provide a context and a scope, that is less than half of one percent of all of our accounts. It's point four percent of the total number of water billing accounts. So kind of getting down to the numbers, we've identified 240 locations that potentially have never been billed. About half of those are residential, and half of those are commercial accounts or locations. There are 310 locations that have accounts but need to be investigated to make sure that they've been billed properly for water consumption. A third of them are residential, and two-thirds of them are commercial. And there are 215 accounts that potentially have not been billed properly since 2016, when the new UMAX system was launched and they were converted, they were converted from the old system to the new system. And forty percent of them are residential, and sixty percent of them are commercial. We are now in the process of conducting manual research on all of these locations and accounts. We are looking at developers' agreements, we're looking at the plans that were filed for construction at the time, we're going to the locations, and we're looking to locate water meters. Just to, in some, talking about the 240 locations, in some of them, we've started to look at, we found, for example, that some of them are now parking lots, and so don't have active water meters. I've, we found one instance, for example, where the street address is accurate but is transposed in the water billing system, which is why they didn't match up. So, this, this eight hundred number, first of all, is the universe that we believe that we need to look at. We don't think that there will be eight hundred locations or eight hundred accounts, but we're trying to be expansive in our universe, so we can make sure that we're looking for any potential issues that may arise. But I, we do expect this number to be a smaller number, in terms of what is actually unbilled. That's our investigative field. I want to address the, I know there were questions about self-reporting, so I just want to clear that up a little bit. My office has been notified of forty entities that may have billing issues. Some of these notifications were self-reported, some came from reporter inquiries, and some came from advocacy groups that had done research or had heard rumors that certain accounts weren't being billed or businesses weren't being billed. I am personally aware of four instances of self-reporting by a customer entity. In two of these instances, the entity had never been billed for water consumption. In two of these instances, the entity had been billed in the past for water consumption, but they had not received a bill in the last year or eighteen months, and wanted to work to resolve those issues. So I want to clarify that the scope of the audit is accounts that may have never been billed. There are also accounts that have had billing disputes, have billing issues, have billing challenges, and that is a different group. They've been billed in the past, they, we are, the Department of Public Works and the city are working with them to figure out the problems with the billing, and to rectify those problems, and to bill and to collect that money. So, I feel like a lot of that has been sort of conflated, in terms of, they're both important issues, but the audit is focused on accounts that may have never been billed for consumption, not accounts that have billing issues, challenges, problems, that are in dispute and have been in dispute for maybe a year or more, while we're trying to work them out with those entities. I also want to provide some context, and it's important to understand that some individuals and entities that are not being billed for water consumption are receiving water bills. And the Ritz Carlton is an example of that. A typical customer should receive a bill that has six different charges on their bill. And if you get a water bill, you can see those charges laid out. There's account management, infrastructure, water consumption, sewer consumption, storm water, and bay restoration, so they're all laid out. Some customers awesome, some customers also have a separate fire suppression system and get billed for that, too. So if you're a commercial or a residential customer, and you're getting a bill, and it doesn't have a water consumption line on it, that should be a big red flag, that you're not being billed for water consumption, and that we don't know that you've got a meter that we should be reading. Obviously, we need to know that, too. If you have a water consumption line that's billing zero, there's also a problem there. There are a number of reasons that we have identified as to why some customers might not be being billed properly for water consumption. One is that the original water meter was installed, but consumption amounts, consumption accounts were never created in the old billing system, and never manually read, like the Ritz. Some accounts were not properly migrated from the old water billing system to the new water billing system. There have been, there may be instances where there's been new construction, where a water meter, a water meter was installed, but the consumption account was not created, and the meter has not been read. We've found a few instances where there are metal lids over the new meters, which obstruct the reads, or the meter could be broken. We are, I think I've talked about this publicly, one policy change that we are actively pursuing is in, before a new customer can get a use and occupancy permit, that there would have to be proof of a water billing account for consumption being created, and that being registered with the Department of Public Works. That should eliminate some of, some of what we're seeing, in terms of not having a consumption account created. I think the final question that I wanted to be able to respond to, before we just answer questions that people have, is, you know, people have asked how much money we estimate the city has lost due to this issue. And again, I am not seeking to minimize this problem in any way, we are committed to getting to the bottom of this, it's a significant issue that needs to be resolved. But we know that the water utility receives a very significant amount of revenue every year, and we are not going to have a total number of what's lost or deferred, because we're going to try to collect some of the back billing. And we expect that we'll have some type of estimate at the conclusion of the audit, and we will make that number public, of course. But based on the relatively small number of accounts that have been unbilled, or may have been unbilled, we expect the amount to have no impact on the bond rating or the fiscal health of the water utility at all. So I just want to make that clear. And again, we won't know what that, we won't have a number to give anyone until this investigation and audit is complete. So, we are happy to answer any questions that you all have. I also just want to reiterate that we certainly understand the council's concern and frustration about this issue. This administration is concerned and frustrated, too. I think we all inherited this challenge together, as well as other billing challenges, and we're committed to working together to try to resolve all these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Goldstein. Just a couple of follow-up questions. You said that these, these eight hundred locations are only the locations in which they, you know, just flat out didn't receive a bill. And are, a couple of questions, are those places where there are disputes, right? Are these folks who are disputing because they did receive a bill before and have stopped receiving them, are they included in this eight hundred, or are they in the other barrel?
So, in the eight hundred account, the eight hundred locations and accounts, they are, they are places and accounts that we've identified, that we want to investigate to see if they've never been properly billed for water usage. There, that is one, that is the audit universe, and that is what I would, what I would be calling, we're looking to see if they have never been billed for water usage. There is, there are other entities out there that have previously been billed for water usage, we have their account, we read their meters, but there have been different types of water disputes, or issues about how their bill is generated, or their billing, and that, and that group of entities may not have been billed for a period of a year or more, because of those billing disputes and the challenges associated with them. And that is a different universe.
So, what's the total amount in that universe?
How many?
How many in that universe, of people who have active billing disputes? And can you guys break those disputes out for us, by people are disputing why they're no longer getting bills, and/or periodically get bills, disputing how much their bill is, whether it's too high, you know? Can you guys break that out? But what's the, the total number?
So I'd have to look into that and run, work with DPW to sort of run different reports and be able to see what that information is, so I can look into that and get back to you.
Thank you. And then, since the, the concerns were initially raised about the commercial accounts, has every, can DPW confirm that everyone's been receiving a bill, since these concerns were raised in October? So since we found out that folks had never received a water bill, have they all been receiving water bills?
Are you talking about the Ritz Carlton residences?
All, all of them in the universe. Can we say that, hey, we're in the universe of the, the people that we are studying, since we found out that, hey, these folks, or the people that self-reported, say that we didn't have a water bill, have they been getting water bills?
So, so again, the people who've self-reported are a mixed, are a mixed bag, right? And so some, and I, you know, we typically, as you know, we don't talk about specific customers because of privacy issues, but I had, we've had sort of an ongoing discussion with Johns Hopkins University about this, and I think Johns Hopkins is a good example, right? They're a large, a commercial customer, and we've had a number of different billing challenges with them, but when they first notified me about the billing challenges back in October, they identified sixteen different accounts that are all consolidated onto a single bill. And when we looked into that, there are actually thirty-eight different meters on the East Baltimore location. And so we've engaged in this process with them, where we're going to every single meter, opening up the meter vault, identifying the meter, what building it services, and what billing account it is connected to. And while I wish that I could get that done in like a nanosecond, it takes time, right? We've got to coordinate with their facilities people, we've got to make sure that the, the premises address, and the buildings that are actually serviced by that water line are matching up to the account and the meter read, so that the numbers match. And so, we have issues like that, where we've got commercial customers who have multiple meters, and multiple meter reads, and multiple accounts and concerns, and so that process is different for every customer. So that, that's, my answer is, there's no sort of one-size-fits-all response, and so we're working with each customer around resolving these challenges.
So we don't know if everyone's gotten a bill yet, because every case is different?
I think, I mean, I think it's fair to say that not everyone who has a disputed issue is getting a bill, because we're still working those issues out with many of them.
Okay. And then, just like a residential person, these accounts are assessed late fees, correct? And they can be turned off for non-payment, just like a residential account?
So, I, I may need, I may need a lifeline here, but when billing accounts are in dispute, we typically do not issue late fees or generate a new bill until the dispute-
No, I'm not, I'm not saying in dispute, I'm saying in general, commercial accounts, if someone hasn't been paying their water bill, they can be turned off, right?
That's correct. They can be.
And how many, you said since 2007, and that's as far back as you guys think this goes, right?
Well, I, so, we just know that the-
The Ritz is 2007.
We know the Ritz Carlton meter was installed in 2007, and that the building became occupied in 2009, right? And so, our belief is that the meter started taking reads in 2009.
So, out of that eight hundred, of the ones that are commercial, right, that you think, how many of them have not received a bill in like five years plus? Do you know how long it's been since they've been receiving bills?
So again, the eight hundred is a universe of locations and accounts-
Right.
-that we have to research. And again, some of them, well, we've done, I think, a very good job backing out all the vacant properties, you know, some we've already determined are parking lots, or we've, there are some that are like places where trucks are, like it's a big lot where they're storing trucks and trailers, and so some of them are places that don't have, don't have functioning water, right? And, and there are some of them that are actually a number of different addresses that are all grouped on a master meter, but the billing address is going to one place, and they're on a master meter. And so, the, like, the answer to your question is, I, I don't know, right? Until we actually investigate every single one of these eight hundred locations, and these eight hundred, these eight hundred locations and accounts, to determine whether they should be receiving a water consumption bill, and whether, in fact, they are, because many of them may be, but the water bill may be going to a different place, or may be attached to a different account, we just won't know the answer to that. And that's why I think we're trying to be really responsible, and, you know, I, if I could just, God knows, if I could just wave a magic wand and fix all of this, I would. But we have to, it's a, it is a tedious process, and we have to make sure we do it right. And we've got to be fair and equitable to everybody who's involved in this process, and we need to do a proper investigation and accounting, and we will be public and disclose our findings.
Two more questions before I turn over to the chair, I have a bunch. How long, what's the timeline for the audit to be completed?
So, at the beginning, I said that I thought it would take six months, which would get us done in May, and I hope that we are. But I am happy to give updates, you know, as we move through this process, about where we are, and how far along we're getting. So, I, again, I hope it will be done in May. It may not be, but if it's not, you certainly will know how many accounts we've gotten through, and what we have found so far.
Thank you. And then, what solutions, either legislative or administrative, are you guys thinking are going to propose to fix this issue once and for all? So, I'm just thinking to myself, we're sending out these bills, and if we send out bills that we see have no water usage on it, right, and we know where these places are going, that's a failure of some kind of policy change that we have to do, interdepartmental, to make sure that that's not happening. But, just looking further, and in the grander scheme of things, are there things that we need to further do to make sure that these things don't happen in the future? Because it's, to me, and to everyone else, unacceptable that since 2007, someone didn't get a water, they didn't receive water bills, where we've had people in that timeframe, we can't do that anymore, but we've had people who lost their homes because they didn't pay their water bill.
Absolutely.
Something that they worked their whole life to get, and people who couldn't really afford their water bill. And now we have folks that we know can afford it, who aren't getting a bill, people who said, hey, I want to be, do the right thing and pay my water bill, who aren't getting the bill. What kind of things are we going to put in place? Are you guys going to suggest that the council passed to put in place, to make sure that this issue doesn't exist anymore?
So I think the number one thing is to require that there be proof that a water billing usage account has been created, signed off by the Department of Public Works, prior to a use and occupancy permit being issued. That would have solved the issue, it would have prevented the problem with the Ritz Carlton, and it would have prevented other problems that we're seeing in the audit. So I think that is the number one priority, and something that we are working to do. And I think that Ms. Day had some other ideas, did you want to talk about?
Welcome back, ma'am.
I've been gone so long, I can't remember how to work the mic. Good evening, everyone. My name is Julie Day, and I have recently returned to the joys of city employment, and this detail has brought me to the Department of Public Works. So, I think that, in small part, my return is precisely because of this issue. The administration saw it as something important, knew I was sitting home watching Rachel Ray, and thought I could be better put to use. So I'm here to help the agency in any way I can, help the administration as I can, and some of the things that we have discussed, in terms of being, changing operations a little bit, the, in addition to the certificate of occupancy, which I think is critical, we have a circumstance where if a developer gets, for instance, a master development agreement, one of the, one, one of the accounts is a, say it's fifty-plus units on a single location, right? That developer will order the meter, the contractor will come to the meter shop, pick up the meter, take it, and say they installed it. And it seems on, in many circumstances, that they were just taking it at their word. So we're going to implement a process that has two components to it. One is, somebody from the meter shop will have a time period by which they have to go out and verify that the meter was installed, and that the account has been established for consumption. Additionally, that meter has a number on it that is logged with the billing office. That administrative staff in the billing office will have a similar timeframe, by which they will have to verify that that assigned meter number is operational. So I think between those three points of contact and verification, the majority of these will, would have been eliminated had we been doing that. We also have, of course, the ongoing issue of training. We have, you know, the customer service division, there's turnover, there's volume, there's, there's a lot going on there, and just reiterating, like, how to help somebody walk through their water bill, how to figure out what the issue really is, instead of, you know, just saying, pay your bill, or don't pay your bill. And I believe also, I would ask you to take note that the, the importance with which the administration is taking this issue can be demonstrated by the fact that the audit is actually being done out of Ms. Goldstein's office. Her staff, we've also deployed people for special training, so that it's outside of the billing office. Nobody really from that shop is working on the audit. So we're trying to be, you know, as comprehensive as we can, and think of solutions that would prevent it from happening in the future.
Thank you. I'm down for now, Mrs. Chair.
Okay. I want to note that we've been joined by Councilmember Costello and Councilmember Cohen. I have a lot of questioning, but I know a few have, have to depart early, so I'm going to go to Councilmember Henry, and then back to myself, and then down through the list. Councilmember Henry.
I don't know if this question would be best for Cheryl, Julie. By the way, welcome back. Rachel Ray's loss is our gain. Back in October, I had reached out to the council president in his capacity as president of the Board of Estimates, and asked that we delay the vote on extending the contract with Itineris, the company that designed and maintains the water billing system. I'm, I'm very happy that the administration agreed with that, and has held off on extending that contract. We've spent, I think, over twenty million dollars so far on Itineris and this water billing software. I guess I have two questions. One is, for all that money, what is Itineris doing to work with DPW to help resolve these issues? And what are they going to be doing moving forward? And are you still expecting slash intending to renew that contract? Or is the decision of whether or not to do that seriously under reconsideration?
So, I think that, first of all, I think that Julie and I both probably need to get some more information and get back to you about that. I certainly think that we're looking at what the scope of work that would be appropriate for Itineris going forward, to help rectify some of the billing or other challenges with the system. But I think until we do a full review of that, and have an understanding of that, and also have a very clear scope of what the work would be going forward, it would not be coming to the Board of Estimates for review.
Okay, well, so that, that's good, too. The reason I had asked about what they're doing to work with DPW to help is, and this is kind of building off of the council president's question, I feel like over the years, when we've had individual complaints about water bills, one of the back and forth between the council and DPW has been, you know, somebody gets a water bill that there's just, it's clearly significantly more or significantly less than it's supposed to be, and there's a question of why did it go out in the first place? You know, what, what can Itineris do to help DPW put some type of- You know, what, what can Itineris do to help DPW put some type of, I guess, warning? Like, some type of warning should go off inside DPW when an out-of-the-ordinary bill is about to go out so that some human being can look at it and make some decisions of, should we be checking on this before we just send it out?
Thank you. But to the first point, based on my observation of what these circumstances show, they're not programming-related, they're not-
Okay.
-Itineris-related. These are, these are operational things that I, I do believe we can fix.
Okay.
That's aside from reviewing the scope of work going forward, and I truthfully haven't really looked at that. But, but I don't think it's, it's not programming-related. But with regard to the outlier bills, there is a check. There, they, there now is, their tolerance is set for something that's too high or too low and it doesn't go out. And there's an investigation done at that location. And then that bill is held. That, it creates a different issue. Because for that month, if the investigation isn't done in time to rectify the, the overage or the shortfall, no bill goes out that month. It's held. So, that while the billing unit investigates it. Now, in, in the past, a customer could have been issued an estimated bill. That practice has not in use anymore, so they just don't get a bill. Now, there, of course, there, there could be one that gets through. But there is programmed into the system a tolerance of a variance from the previous bills that will stop the billing.
Does, does, can anyone tell us what that tolerance range is?
Somebody could, but probably nobody is here with us right now.
If, 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 if you could send the committee that information, I, I would love to, I know I would love to share that with my staff and, and maybe others on the council would want to share it with their staff, just so that we could use that as part of the triage-
Right.
-when people reach out to us with incorrect water bills.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And, and Ms. Goldstein, for the, the data that you provided, you, you laid out in the beginning of the hearing, sort of a lay of the land, a scope of work for each of the eight hundred customers. Could you also provide that to the committee as well? I was trying to do my best to keep up with, with all the math. So, just, I don't write fast enough, so. So, the, the question I had, so there was a period of time, so it sounds like based on what you've stated, that there are customers that may not have, that between two thousand and seven and receiving a new meter, may have not received a bill. Am I understanding that correctly?
So, I think there's, there's, there's one group of people, there's one group of customers potentially like, like the Ritz Carlton residents, where many years, however many years ago, when the building was built or the development was built and there was a meter installed, for whatever reason, that meter account, usage account, was never created in the old billing system that the Department of Public Works had. And so, it was never read. And then it never, because it was never read, no one ever really knew it existed and it didn't transfer over when the new billing system was adopted in two thousand and sixteen. That's sort of one potential group. The second group would be buildings that were built two thousand and fifteen, sixteen on, where there was a new meter from the UMAX, the new system that was installed, but there was not a usage account created, and so that meter has not been read. And then, I feel like there might have been one thirty, I think those are the two, I think those are really the two main categories. There are other meters that may not have been read for periods of time because there's a metal lid or the meter was broken or other issues. But I think the main two issues that we're investigating, and, and look, I, I'm not, we've not found evidence of this yet, but I mean, there's possibility that when a meter was installed, that, I never get this term, and I'll, was it a straight pipe? Right, when, there was a space, like, it may not have ever, there may have been a bypass of the meter installed and that, that's not, and because there was a bypass installed, the meter's not reading. If we find anything like that, we'll be referring that to the Inspector General's office for investigations. So, I mean, there, there may be, there may be instances where there was something done to bypass the meter purposefully, or it was done and never fixed or whatever, when there was a broken meter. But in, if we find anything like that, we've been working actively with the Inspector General's office and, and that office would investigate anything like that, that we would discover.
Okay. So, I guess, quick follow-up to, to that. One, you mentioned that you would be attempting to collect missed payments or folks who have not paid. Does that scope extend to two thousand and seven?
So, we've been in discussions about back billing and we've done research on what typical policies are. And there's a wide variety about back billing. The Public Service Commission in Maryland, when it comes to the electrical utility, the maximum, that they will let BGE back as three years. And so, we are considering having a policy of going back three years in back billing. And we would also have a dispute resolution process along with the right to an administrative hearing at the Environmental Control Board as part of that process. There's also, in Maryland, a three-year statute of limitations. So, I mean, I think one of the things we have to consider in all of this is, do we want to litigate over all of this? How far back do we want to go? What's fair, what's equitable? And trying to have a single policy that would be applied evenly to all customers who might be impacted by this.
Okay. Two, two others and then I'll hand it over. The, so I'm trying to, can you help us understand how a meter can be installed, but an account not created? How, how does that, like, how does that happen? Does that sound, that's sort of-
No, I understand what you're saying. I, can you help, can you?
It's just, it's, they're two distinct steps. So, the, the contractor install, installs the meter. It's their responsibility to call and say, I've installed the meter, start billing me. They don't, right? So, we, that's why I'm saying, one of the, the new processes would be to verify that a number of ways, to make sure that that released meter has been activated for billing for consumption.
And let me just, I mean, again, just to kind of maybe put a fine point on it. Like, for a developer, they could install a water meter when they dig up the ground and before they pour concrete, but they may not have water coming to that property like for, for two, three years, depending upon what their development cycle is. And so, the consumption account wouldn't be activated until the property itself was using water. So, that's why you see these delays in terms of creating these accounts for consumption.
Okay.
And that's why the point of collaborating with HCD on the certificate of occupancy as a good checkpoint for that activation of the account would be really prudent going forward.
Okay. And then, last question before we move to the rest of the committee. So, does the, you know, kind of a two-part question. Do you have annual projections of revenue? So, we know how many large entities exist because there is some, some registration, whether that be tax records, et cetera. Are there projected, are there projected amounts that we think should be coming in? And if so, how is that formulated? And, and really what I'm trying to get at is, I'm try, I'm still struggling to understand, like, if we know the Ritz Carlton exists, we know that these large institutions exist, they're, they're, in some ways connected to our conduit system, they have electricity. Like, we know they're here, we can also see them. But obviously, there's a verification process that, you know, we, you said wasn't happening, so we, you know, I'm not going to pick on that again. But, how do we, yeah, how does this happen where we sort of know, based on a building of a certain size, of a certain number of employees or customers, are there, are there projections made that we think that this is how much it should come in? And, and the other piece I would add is, with the, when the new meters went in, my understanding is that there were different, differentiations, differentiations in size of meter. So, we know how many of a meter of a certain size that would go into a commercial property exists. And again, knowing that those, how many of those meters are out there, are there ways to project estimated usage by any given commercial property of a, of a certain meter size? Or, I don't know, if I'm going way too in the weeds here, but how, are there projections made in, in, in this process?
Well, I'm going to defer to finance, just because I can.
Steve Kraus, Deputy Finance Director. There is a, there is a financial consultant that assists Public Works in finance in determining a financial forecast for each of the, the utilities that's, that's drinking water, wastewater and stormwater. And, and they do take a look at, at certain statistics and quantitative aspects of each of those programs and accounts. But I can't speak to exactly how far down, how deep of a dive they do. But I think we could certainly get with them and get that answer for you. But, but it is a, a very quantitative and, and I think, complete process that they do. It's Reftillis, and they're a national renowned firm that, that assists utilities in their financial forecasting. So, we could get back to you on that.
Yeah. And, because I think it'd be helpful to know, because I would imagine that if you have a certain forecast of revenue in any given fiscal year, and we also know how much has actually come in, there should have been a discrepancy at some point from two thousand and seven to now, I would imagine, that would have said, look, we're not hitting the mark for some reason. And, and that, I would imagine, should have triggered it, a review. Is that, Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marsha Collins, Department of Public Works. What we look at, what I know that our, our folks at Reftillis and we as a department look at are the trends. So, in other words, we have years and years' worth of data about water usage. And for this number of locations, it wouldn't even be a blip on that data. So, unless you wanted to just pick out certain locations and try to look at what's there and then compare to usage, you wouldn't necessarily pick this up. I will say that nationally, water usage has declined because there are more and more water-saving, water-efficient appliances going into or being renovated into homes. So, nationally and locally and regionally, we've seen a decline in overall usage. We know in general how many, we have a predominance of the five-eighth-centimeters, which would typically serve a, a, a single household or maybe more than, maybe two units. And we know how many we have roughly of, you know, the larger. So, we can look at that as well and compare that against trends.
Okay. I, I have some more follow-up on that, but I want to defer to the, the other committee members. Councilwoman Schleifer?
Yeah. So, just as a follow-up to the statement about us recovering the money that's been lost. So, the water billing system is a property-based system as opposed to how BGE operates, where it's a user-based system. So, over all these years, countless residences, business properties have transferred ownership. So, who would be responsible for those bills, once you figure it out? Is it going to be the previous owners? Is it going to be the current owners? And as a follow-up to that, do you believe the current way the billing system is set up is how we should proceed moving forward, or should it be a user-based system?
So, in answer to the first part of your question, we're, we'll work with the legal folks in the law department to make those determinations about who, you know, who would be properly back-billed, under what set of circumstances. And I think the second, the answer to your second question is, I don't, I, I need to think about that. I mean, maybe different people would have different opinions. I, I'm not prepared to answer your second question, but happy to have a discussion with you at some point in time about it and kind of talk through all the different issues. I, I don't know.
Sure. So, can we, can we make that a request for the committee to get something from the law department, you know, in the next week or so, that says who they would deem responsible for this stuff? Because that would certainly determine our likelihood of collecting. If it's due on the previous owners of any property, our likelihood is, is pretty small. But if it's on the property, obviously, our likelihood is a lot greater. And then, you know, if that is something that would then default to people's, like, title insurance or something else, because obviously, these transfers took place and they got approvals and not knowing that this would come up later on.
Yeah. No, I think that's, that's a great question and I think something we need to think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember McRae?
Ms. Goldstein, how many of the eight hundred have been notified, the residential and commercial customers? How many have been notified so far and what processes are we going through to notify them as well?
So, putting aside people who've reached out to us about issues, we are actually working on developing a standard notification process. We've been working on a draft letter that would provide, basically, you know, be clear that this account or customer had been identified in the audit as a customer who had previously been unbilled for water consumption. It would give a detailed explanation of the bill that they were receiving and what the back billing amounts were and why. It would also have their appeal rights, their rights for payment plans. But we're, we're developing all of that because we want to make sure that when people are notified, that they have a clear message, they have a clear point of contact, they have a clear appeals process. So, we've not sent out notifications as we have identified accounts, but we are working to develop a process by which everyone would get the same message and everybody in this circumstance would be treated the same way fairly and equitably and get the same information.
And right now, we're just looking at, you said, a standardized letter.
A standardized letter with, that would have very specific information about their particular account and their particular billing challenge, like how far back it went, what the issue was, what the amounts are, and, and, you know, what the total amount is and what their appeal right is.
Okay. I just got one more question, Mr. Chair. You, I think you actually touched on it a bit. Councilwoman Schleifer said something about back billing. You mentioned something about a statute of limitations, what BGE is able to do. And you did mention it likely we're going to do, they'll have a dispute process, they'll be able to go before the environmental board. You, you mentioned something just now about payment plans. What other options are we exploring or we're thinking about, particularly for residential customers who may be impacted by this outside of, say, payment plans? What else are you guys thinking of doing when they go through the dispute process? When they go through the environmental hearing, we're saying, hey, you still owe this certain amount of money?
So, we've been thinking about having different payment plan options. And also, if none of our payment plan options work for the customer, having the opportunity to work with our law office around structuring a different type of agreement. We've also, we're also looking at, there are some jurisdictions, you know, there are, there are other utilities in other jurisdictions that allow a customer who is back-billed to pay back the amount that they owe over the same period of time as the back bill is, right? So, if you, if the back bill is ninety days, you'd have ninety days to repay. If the back bill was a year, you'd have a year to pay. So, that's something else that we're looking into as a possibility.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being here. So, since entering office, we, my office has dealt with three hundred and fifty-seven unique constituent issues related to water billing. These include unexplained dramatic increases in bills, improperly functioning meters, incorrect infrastructure charges, failure to bill, delayed responses from DPW staff, incorrect responses from DPW staff. We see this as both an issue of accountability, but also an equity issue as well, as we know that many large institutions were underbilled while our constituents, in some cases, were overbilled or weren't billed for an extended period of time and then face massive bills, like some folks in my district recently that myself and Director Goldstein have been discussing. So, you know, we keep referring to people paying water bills as our customers, but if DPW was a business, it would be a failing business. Three hundred and fifty-seven constituent requests over three years is way, way, way too many. And those are people who have suffered as a result of poor practices within this agency. So, my question is, and apologies for missing the first part of the hearing, and I do appreciate the working relationship that Director Goldstein has established as we've had this very significant recent challenge with some folks who've been underbilled. But what practices specifically is DPW fixing so that in three years from now, I don't come back here and say, I just spent two-thirds of my staff's time dealing with brokenness within the water billing system?
Thank you, Councilwoman Cohen. That is our greatest hope as well, and we're working diligently to, not only with the particular circumstance that we're all familiar with, but to prevent it from happening in the future. We talked about a couple of issues. That was new construction, as I recall. And we've talked about implementing- And we've talked about implementing a process by which the certificate of occupancy would verify that the count had been established, that administrative staff would know that the meter had been released and the count has been established, and also someone from the meter shop. So like a three-pronged approach to verification of the establishment of the account. I think that would cut out the vast majority of the circumstances that you're describing with, you know, flawed information, wrong information, good, you know, what, that's, that's an ongoing training issue that we have with, with staff, and we're committed to making sure, you know, the residents, the community members of our city deserve to get good information and get, customer service has to be number one. We can, we strive to make it better. It's just, all I can do is commit to you to trying. You know, I'm a Girl Scout on my own, or I will try. But, so that's, that's, that's our commitment is to continue. It's important, it's a critical service that is provided by DPW, and it has to be done well, and has to be done better than what we've been doing.
It does. And, you know, I will simply say that if it were sort of a one-off situation, if it was, you know, once a month, my office was getting a call about something that seemed off about a bill, then, you know, we understand that, there's human error in any of these systems. But it has felt, as a new council member, also no anymore, it has felt systemic, and it has felt like there are some real gaps in service delivery, in training, in responsiveness. And then what happens is, it gets placed on our staffs to manage relationships with folks who are justifiably frustrated because they're not getting correct information, they're not getting any sort of reasonable, I mean, 15 days is not a reasonable amount of time to get a response when you're stressed out, when you're trying to pay your bills and just survive. That should not be the standard. So I guess the request that I'm making of you all is, I really want to see some improvement within the day-to-day practices of the water billing department within the agency. And I know that everybody is working hard, but it's just not been good enough, because this has been what has dragged so many of us into these situations where our customers, our constituents, as I prefer to call them, are incredibly frustrated, and much of it to do with systemic failure within the agency.
Council President Scott?
Thank you. This is for anybody. We've heard reports that during this process, DPW has like zeroed out, adjusted or closed out water bills due to them being delinquent or exceeding a certain amount. Can anyone address that?
What I would say to that is, you know, we read those allegations as well, and any allegation of fraud or any type of abuse has been referred to the Inspector General's office for investigation.
Is there an open investigation, do you know?
I can't comment on that.
Well, we will find out. Thank you. And Ms. Goldstein, one, I just moved the mic to the chair, so you don't have to keep standing up. Also, as you know, in, in the letter that I sent to the mayor, we had some specific requests, one being a list of the, the addresses for all of the bills in question. I wanted to see if you guys were able to provide that today.
Council President, I had jury service yesterday and didn't get your letter until very late in the day. So we're looking through the request that you had for specific documentation, and we'll be getting back to you.
Thank you. I'll just continue to read through the list. We should expect that by the end of the week. So we asked for the 800, we know they're not, some are all at the same address, but the 800 specific places, how many in, unique addresses they are. The 240 addresses, or bills that have never been billed for water usage is another one. And also for each of those locations, the length of time since the last bill that they received, and what month and what year they are in, and if the city received communications from those addresses with respect to water, and water bills, wastewater bills, or anything related, we'd like to see that. And also, of the 800 addresses needing inferred investigation, we've gotten that information about the breakdown between commercial and residential customers. Because also, I also want to point out again, to a point I made earlier, when we're talking about only going back three years, I think that we have to also remember once again that during that time, this timeframe that we're talking about, I think that we all can agree that someone probably lost their house in 2007, we'll just say, because they didn't pay a water bill that they were fighting, that they say was too high, that was, they said was erroneous, and they were overruled. And this person who may have been a senior citizen, who had lived in that house since they bought that house, when their husband worked at Bethlehem Steel, lost something that their family had, the only thing they've ever had. And I think that that's the gravity of the situation, because that's what the citizens of Baltimore are thinking right now, that they have been complaining about water bills since the day I walked into City Hall. We've had two Public Works Directors who said, "I'm going to fix the water bill system." It's not fixed. Like, when will it end? And we have to put everything in place to make sure that the citizen can believe in this again. Because, again, like I said in my opening, if we can't get the simple stuff right of sending a bill out and making sure that that bill even goes out, and when it goes out, it has everything on it that it's supposed to have on it, and it goes to the right people, then how are we going to handle the tough things that the city has to face? So, we're going to continue to press on this issue, because it's unacceptable that we continue to have citizens, right? I think that the council would agree. The thing that we get most complaints about on the council is water bills. That's the number-one thing that we get each and every day. Bill's too high, or people calling us, "We don't have a meter. The meter's not working. Meter's leaking. I didn't get a bill. I got a bill." It seems that this is an issue that DPW can't fix on its own, so we're all going to have to put our heads together and fix it for them.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I had a couple of questions around, so there's an audit that was initiated in October. Prior to this, what has been the agency's policy on auditing bills? Because if I recall, there was a hearing, we had sometime within this term, that there was mentioned that some number of bills are randomly selected for accuracy. If I misheard that, my apologies, but are, are bills regularly audited for accuracy, both residential and commercial, as a standard practice in DPW?
I'm not familiar with that based on just my inexperience so far with the agency, but we certainly can check and get back with you on that.
I think that'd be helpful.
It would be a good practice.
And if so, it would be helpful, if, if, in that investigation, it would be helpful for the committee to have that, or the council to have that information, how many audits have taken place, how often are they taking place, what are the outcomes, what are the accountability measures, that kind of thing? Because I do fully intend to reconvene this hearing in May or so, we can continue to communicate. So it would be helpful to have that in front of us for the next hearing, because it just, it's somewhat baffling to see that this kind of thing could, could occur. But, you know, we're in a new day, so it sounds like this thing is something that you're looking at. The other questions I had were around the, I had some questions about the county billing system. Do, does Baltimore County, since we are the water supplier, I know there's some delineations in responsibility for billing, does the county, this is a few questions, does the county use the same billing software that we do? If so, how long have they been using it? Also, are any of the properties, or does the scope of investigation into, into this audit, the audit, does it include commercial properties in Baltimore County?
Okay, so, the answer to the software question is that Baltimore County is still on the old software, software that the city was on. So there was not to, so there was this, they called it legacy, there was this system called legacy that Baltimore City and Baltimore County were on. This, in 2016, we, the DPW integrated, I mean, they went to the new water billing system and these meters and moved over to this new UMAX water system, water billing system. The county remains on the legacy system and continues to get bills on a quarterly basis and not monthly. And the answer, or second part of your question is, so far, our audit is limited to the Baltimore City accounts.
So it's, so just, so to be clear, so to make it understand what you're saying, so they, in 2016, the city made a switch to a different software than?
The county still remains on the old software.
Okay.
And the old billing system.
So they bill quarterly, they use older technology?
Correct.
Are they estimating bills?
I don't, I don't, we?
Okay.
I don't know.
So my concern is, with this, is that there is, so it sounds like there is also a possibility that there may be commercial properties in Baltimore County that are not being billed or not accurately being billed, and there may be additional revenue that isn't being collected by the city.
So complicated. Well, so, so it's something, it's something we can certainly look into. I would also say that sort of the whole revenue-sharing agreement with the county and how it gets paid and what the county pays is a very complex structure. So, there's, there's a whole, long agreement from the 1970s, 70s that governs how much the county pays the city for water, regardless of how much the county residents actually pay in billing revenue, and I, I know only enough to be dangerous. But, so I, I think that issue is a different issue altogether and has a lot of layers of complexity to it. But I, I hear you, and it's something that we can certainly be thoughtful about and take into consideration moving forward. I think our first priority is to get through the city accounts and to finish the audit of the city accounts.
So it sounds like Ms. Collins had an additional information, and then I got you.
Yeah, I just wanted to remark that the meters that are in the ground in the county were transitioned to the meters that we use here in the city, in that they are transmitting a signal. For areas of the county that are close to our city-county line, they are being picked up by our collector system. For others, we have personnel who drive down the street with a laptop at a certain speed, and we collect the reads that way, that way. So the, they're halfway through the process of transitioning. So they're using the same meter and electronic delivery of data that we are using here in the city. They just haven't transitioned over to the billing system and, and monthly billing as of yet. But that is their plan to do so.
But they will?
Yes, sir.
And do you know what the timeline is for that?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Council President Scott?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is, Ms. Goldstein, you brought up an issue that has been a issue for me since the day I became council president. The simple fact that the city's agreement with the county about water and what we collect was done in the 70s and that we haven't renegotiated that is an embarrassment, in my opinion, right? We have to think, I think one is 72 and the other is 74, so that's 10 years and 12 years before I was born. And we know that the world is a different place. And when we continuously see the issues that we've had, why aren't we renegotiating and thinking those deals through in a 2020 way? Heck, I'll take a 2010 way, right? Thinking about how much the world has changed since then, how much the county has changed since 1974. When are we going to do that? And how, how are we expected to go out and say to the citizens of Baltimore that, yes, we do collect water bills and revenue from the county, but it's based on some agreement that's, you know, longer than I've been breathing air? And then also, when are we going to, and this is really for, for you, Ms. Day, too, thinking about new construction that's happened in the city since like 2005? And we, you hinted about it a little bit, Ms. Goldstein, when you talked about when things are built and permits are given, why doesn't DPW, housing, et cetera, coordinate around that? Because we now know, we also know that we've had this issue of developers getting like the different sized pipes and the pipes being different, going to the houses, so people's bills were higher, but then they fought them and got it, got it lower. What's the plan to deal with that as well? And how are we going to address that issue long-term? And also, can this committee have a, a list of, hold on, I wrote it down, a list of all new construction from 2005? The size of the, the pipes and the meters going into those places? And like a rough estimate of how those bills have been, being done?
So, so Council President, I'm glad you brought up the water agreement with the county, because this administration has, has made an important priority of, of renegotiating that agreement and is actively involved in discussions with the county, so.
Ms. Goldstein, I'm gonna, I'm glad you said that, but I'm going to interrupt you for one point. We were, I was told that in July, at a Board of Estimates meeting, when I asked that question, it is now March. It, at some point, we have to move forward. That's way too long. I don't even, you, yeah, you were back then, but you were dealing with ransomware at that time. This, that's too long, right? We have to do things quickly and efficiently. Like, when is that going to be done? How long before that deal gets done? Or estimated time of completion? Because we know, we all know it's too long, it updates everyone here. I think everyone on the council except Councilwoman Clark, right? It's just.
Not me, so I might take a little offense at that.
No, I mean, outdated is in working in city government.
Okay.
When, when do you expect that to be done?
I will find out and get back to you.
Thank you.
The other thing, we can look into your request, but did, did you take, did somebody write down the second request?
We'll send it all in writing, so you have it. Yes, ma'am.
If I may, the, you are correct in that the initial agreement with Baltimore County began in 1972. However, there were, we pursued arbitration with the county back in the 90s, and it took time, both arbitration and going to court, so that by the early 90s, we had an adjustment made to the formula for how we bill the county that was reinforced and supported by the judge at that time. So I don't want you to think that the formula that we used was a 1972 formula. That being said, we are pursuing an updating of all of our agreements with all of our counties. Yes, sir.
Thank you, because the 90s is still too long. I was in elementary school then. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to stay on the line of questioning on the county, just a few quick follow-ups. Ms. Collins, so you mentioned that, just so I want to make sure I got it correct, for the technology used for the collection, or the meter-reading technology, is the same?
Yes, sir.
Between Baltimore County, Baltimore City?
Yes, sir. In other words, it's the brass meter we all have. It has the, the ERT on it, and I don't know what ERT stands for, but that's basically what's showing the electronic recording of usage, and then the transmittal to a collector unit, or in the cases of the county that are further away from our city-county line, people are driving down the street with a laptop, recording those electronic recordings.
But the software is the same, essentially?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, but the, they use an older billing software. So can you help me understand that since the county doesn't seem to have the same accuracy issues that we've had over time, over the last few years, what was the reason for the switch? If they don't seem to be having issues with the legacy system, why would they switch? And why did we switch to a different set of technology for billing?
I'm going to guess that that legacy system is older than any of the council people sitting at their desks. And it was a, a system that was developed by a person working for the city who has long retired. It was based on a mainframe system. These are all reasons why it had very, the old billings that people would receive, I found very difficult to read. You couldn't really do much with the bill itself. Our new bills, you can see comparisons from prior months, messaging sit on there, you could add different items on there. If somebody entered into a payment plan, you could reflect it on their bill. None of that can be done on the legacy system. And I think they had to bring back a retired person just to maintain the legacy system. So it's on its last leg, and they really need to transition.
Mr. President, follow-up?
Thank you. A follow-up to the issue about the county and this legacy system and us not knowing if we have the same issue out there. Have we considered just doing at least a random audit of county water bills to make sure that the same problem isn't happening out there? Because especially if they're using an outdated system that we no longer use, and Councilman, to, to your point, as someone who was here when the city was using this legacy system, we had the exact same issue. So it was, it wasn't the system, it seemed to be that, that we just, they couldn't get it right. Have we thought about checking with, doing an audit, random audit of the county to make sure that everyone that are our users, that these bills are going out to commercial and residential people that are supposed to be getting them? And then also, just sitting here, I just checked my social media feed, I have people who are saying they sold their houses in June and July, and they're still being billed for a house that they for a house that they no longer own.
So, so the county issue, we can certainly look into that and, 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 you know, think about doing that as part of the work that we're doing. With respect to the transfer of properties during the summer, as I understand it, there is, there has, there, the Department of Public Works is working on clearing the backlog of transferred properties for billing issues. I have heard from constituents about this issue. I know that it is an issue that, and I know that we've actually been tracking the number of them, and the Department of Public Works is working on getting that number down. I would say if you're hearing from constituents, to please have them reach out to us so we can correct that situation immediately. It is an issue.
So who directly, should I send, I'll send them to Marcia.
Send it to me, sir, but the other problem is that.
How many of them? How many are in that, that, that transfer issue?
So I can get a number for you and get it back to you. The number has decreased over time because I know it's something that's, it's coming down, but I, it is, it is definitely an issue, and it's an issue I'm aware, I am aware of.
So what, what also happens is that when someone purchases a property, they need to contact us to establish their, their account with us, because we would have the former owner still on the account. So it does require the purchaser to, to do something. Sometimes we've had to involve the prior owner if the purchaser wasn't taking care of that issue. And as, they have to be able to show us their purchase, there, there has to be documentation to show that they actually purchased the home. Usually, it's a settlement sheet.
And then also, this is something I think that this kind of information that we could share with like the board of realtors and everyone, so that they, when they're selling homes, that they're giving this information to residents, you know, just to try to help as much as possible, things that you need to do when you buy a house in Baltimore City. So if we could come up with like a one-pager about that from, you know, the agency or agencies to give that, I think that that would help us in the future. I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. So with that, I, I, all of my remaining questions, I think, will be, come out in the audit. My hope, or hopeful, will come out in the audit. Trying to make sure I got everything. Sorry, I had a long list here. Oh, okay. So, no, I did have a few more questions, sorry. So in some of the reporting around this billing situation, there was mention of use of consultants in, my assumption is establishing the billing system. Can you talk a little bit about the role of consultants as it relates to the transition into this UMAX system and ongoing usage of consulting, consultation to the agency in to the tune of, what was reported was millions of dollars annually? Can you talk a little bit about that and what that role is?
So I think, you know, Ms. Day and I come late to this situation, as you know. You know, she's been in this role for three weeks, and I came to the city less than a year ago. So it's something we can look into and get back to you. And, you know, neither of us were here when the decision was made to change the system or the consultants were hired. So that's something that we, neither one of us has dug into quite yet, so we can do that and get back to this group, but we just, we're not equipped to answer that question at this time.
And are, are consultants still being used for billing, billing issues or billing consultation?
Yes, they are. In fact, they actually have helped train the, the folks that are outside of DPW to help with the audit, so that they, they're fluent now.
So they're working on the audits?
They're, they've trained the staff that are working on the audit.
Okay. Is, is there a reason why that couldn't have been done internally? Just to help, help us understand?
They're, they're, they're most, they, they train all of the staff. That's one of their responsibilities because of having the system that they've developed. They're most, they're most aware of its situations and how best to utilize it. They're our trainers. And then after that, and how staff can take over for the training.
So there is a train-to-trainer occurring that will eventually lead to phasing out of?
Again, I would defer, if you would give us time to get back to you on the specifics of that.
Okay. We can revisit that. So it sounds like we have a lot of questions that have been thrown out and will be provided in writing to the president's office. I think I had a few more that speak to this consultation piece, consultant's piece, that I'll just include in the series of questions that the president's office sends out, if you're okay with that, Mr. President, and you can delineate which ones are from me and which ones are from your office for review. Are there anyone that's here that's signed up to testify? We want to move to public testimony. Okay. Oh, she needs the mic, yeah.
How much time do I have?
All right. If you could say your name.
Mona Lisa Diallo. I live in Baltimore City, and I recently just purchased, purchased a house, well, about 18 months ago in Baltimore City. And I'm, I'm used to visiting other countries, and my water bill is like $100 a month. So I did an experiment. I know this may sound kind of gross, but I did an experiment for a month. I only took a shower. We took a shower for one minute. Every, every day, we took a shower for one minute, just the water running, as opposed to just being in the shower. We only flushed a toilet. We used one toilet. We only flushed it three times a day to see if there was a difference in our water bill. The water bill went up. It went up. I'm concerned. I'm concerned that Chow retired a couple of days after the Ritz-Carlton was found out. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned that some of the people that have testified don't understand the severity, the economic violence that happened to the people that lost their homes, and how it's connected to the violence on the street. How people lost their homes, generational wealth, and trying to find money to eat. That's concerning to me. So please don't take this lightly. Please don't laugh. It's not funny. People hurt just to have water. It's meaningful to me. So I'm here to ask you all to please. Consider us. Consider us. That's all.
Thank you. And I think that's a perfect closing. I mean, I can, can honestly say that this committee's extremely concerned. The administration is definitely concerned about this. I share that frustration that, you know, I came in on when people were still losing homes to water bills, had constituents that were impacted, seniors that were impacted, commercial properties, small businesses. I mean, this is, this has been a, a issue that we all know has been going on for way too long, and my hope is that we will be coming out of this a, with a better system in place and, and a more equitable system. And again, we will reconvene. We'll send questions ahead, because I did have more specifics that I'd like to parse out on, on some of these issues that relates to the county system, as it relates to the use of consultants and what their job is, because there's some significant expenditures tied to that, that we could be using in other places, frankly, in my opinion. But more importantly, it's about just getting it right. And our hope is that when we reconvene and the audit is concluded, that we come out of it with an accurate system that we can all be proud of and stop spending as much time as Councilman Cohen has indicated in the president's office. You know, I could probably throw out a similar number on the number of calls and complaints we get about it, and, you know, if it's frustrating for myself and my staff, it has to be equally, if not more frustrating, to the residents of Baltimore who are experiencing this firsthand. So with that, we are going to, not going to conclude the hearing. We will revisit this a little bit later, but for right now, we're, yeah, we're done for today. If you could, please make sure you don't leave anything behind, and thank you all.